Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our July 20, or June, I'm fast forwarding, June 25th meeting of the Clayton Board of Aldermen. We will have a discussion session first from 6:30 to 7:00. And I believe we have MSD here to talk about Prop S and what that means for our cities. Do you have anything else to add to that?
No.
All right.
Brian Holsher and Bess McCoy here this evening.
Works?
Yeah.
My name's Brian Holsher. I'm the Executive Director and CEO at MSD. I'm going to do two things, and I'm going to work off of one piece of paper, one chart that'll be up on your screens. I want to talk about, just give some background, background as to how we got to where we are right now, and then really dive into the thing that I believe staff wants you to understand so that you can make a decision about how you may want to move forward. So some background, prior to the April elections, MSD funded stormwater work for creek erosion and flooding through little sub-districts, little taxing districts. They were formed in the 1960s. They are only located, in general, between the city of St. Louis city limits and 270. And there are seven of them that are currently being billed. That was the only places we collect taxes. It's the only place we provided a service. Prop S changed that. So the commitment was Proposition S is a district-wide revenue source, which is the city of St. Louis and about 90% of St. Louis County. If that goes in place, or commitment, or starting point was then to turn off all of the OMCIs or set them at zero. That's what the change was. Both of those programs, I mean, the big difference, I guess, is the, obviously, the district-wide one now provides services to everybody instead of just a small group of folks. But the point we really want to get down to, both of the past program that was the OMCIs, which is Operation Maintenance Construction Improvement, that's just a name in the ordinances for these taxing sub-districts. Both of them had a local municipal stormwater grant program. And it looks different between the two programs. I'm really going to zone in on that because that's what we have been asked by some municipalities to consider something more than just the passage of Prop S. I'm going to describe to you tonight what that is. So if you look at the chart that's in front of you, the second municipality from the top is Clayton. That first entry you see under fiscal year 2025, which for us is tax year 2024, Clayton would have available to it, and they will for this last year, about $400,000 worth of stormwater grant funds available to do whatever you felt was the highest priority stormwater problem in your city. Every municipality had the option for different dollar values to use this. Some used it. Some decided, we really want you to spend it just within the area on your higher, more regional-type projects. We actually have some taxing sub-districts that said, we don't even want the option of having municipal grants. You just spend it all. So everybody did something different, and that's what you see on the sheet here. So what happens is if you go to Proposition S, you'll see Clayton will now have available to it $125,000 per year for municipal grants for the city of Clayton. If you wish to say, we have a stormwater problem. This is our priority. We would like MSD to provide a grant to us to do this work on our own. The change in the number is due to the methodology. So under that first column, under OMCI, the amount of monies that went to the city of Clayton was based on property values. These are both property taxes. It was higher. Under Proposition, and the reason we were able to do that, we had just small sub-districts by watersheds with communities that looked pretty much the same financially and everything else. Now, we've got a revenue source that's our entire 525 square miles. The distribution is now by population. And that's why you see the difference where Proposition S, the amount changes. With that, the results were there are 60 municipalities who are in some of the OMCIs, multiple ones are in half the cities in one. Forty-four of those folks are getting, having available to them larger municipal grants than they have in the past. Seven are getting about the same amount of money. There are nine who are getting less, Clayton being one of them, as to what would be available to you. Those nine have asked if MSD would consider, if the municipalities felt it was important enough to keep some of the OMCI tax in place in order to raise the amount that's available on an annual basis for a stormwater grant program. This isn't MSD's initiative. We're here talking to you about this. Municipalities have asked us, is there a way we can express our opinion for your Board of Trustees to consider something? And so what we've set up, so right now, before I move forward, you're, another explanation. You're in a big OMCI called Deer Creek. You're in a very small part of the city of Clayton. It's something called the University City Branch of River to Pear. Very small part of the city. For instance, in Deer Creek, you see on the chart, you get about 401,000 available per year. That other sub-district's about 17,000. Like I said, there's just barely a part of Clayton that's in it. So I'm, but I'm just going to concentrate on Deer Creek right now for an explanations purposes, explanation purposes. So what they asked us to do after talking with them was to consider leaving one quarter of the property tax in place, what it currently is. Right now, it's 6.4 cents per $100 valuation. The request is to consider, have staff consider, ask the trustees to consider leaving one quarter of that, or 1.6 cents for $100 valuation, assessed valuation of the OMCI. Leave it in place. And the sole purpose of that revenue is to give it back to the municipalities as additional municipal grant funds. None of it would be used by MSD. So if you take a look at the chart, that 1.6 cents, you look at the last column under Clayton, you see it's about $200,000. So if, as we move forward, that were in place, Clayton would then have available to it on an annual basis, either for saving for another project or for using immediately, 125,000 plus 200,000, which would be $325,000 in municipal grants potentially available to you to spend on any stormwater issue you felt was your highest priority. Just like the OMCIs, and I'm saying, because I understand from staff that the city of Clayton made a decision in the past to just let those go ahead and forfeit into the larger region and just do projects. That's what the past decision by the city was. Like I said, like a lot of others. The same thing applies here. If these aren't used, right now, they will go into the bigger pot and solve the bigger regional issues. That's where, that's where they'll be turned over into. So the impact on your customers, on your residents, moving from the existing OMCI to Proposition S is about break even. The real estate tax for Prop S is slightly higher, but it does not include personal property tax. So your residents, as far as property tax, your residential customers will not see any change. This option on the far right to add, leave part of the OMCI tax in place, the impact of that is about $25 per year on their property tax bill for every $750,000 appraised value, not assessed, appraised value. Appraiser comes out and says, you have a $750,000 home. It's 25 bucks, or whatever multiple or less of that that you want. That's the impact on the customers. The commitment we made, and most of this, well, all of this initial request is coming from nine, from some of the municipalities you see under this watershed. These are the folks who said, hey, we want you to consider that. What we told them we would do is if we can get elected officials in that OMCI district who represents 75% of the population to say, we will write you a letter and we will tell you, we are asking you to go to your Board of Trustees and see if they will put this in place. We've committed, once we get support that represents 75% of the population, we're willing to do that, that far-right column to add that. We made no guarantee that we would move forward. Guarantee was that staff would present it to the Board of Trustees, that the folks there were supporting this. Remember, our, our goal with Proposition S was to not have small taxing districts and just have a district-wide program, kind of similar to what we do with wastewater. So we're in that process now. We've described that to, we've gotten a little bit of response from folks. We know there's, they're thinking this through right now. Different municipalities are doing it at a different time. So what Clayton has the option of doing for both of the OMCIs, but I'll concentrate on Deer Creek here right now, is if you want to proactively send us a letter indicating that the city of Clayton would like MSD to recommend to its Board of Trustees to put this additional 1.6 cents on, instead of just leaving the tax at zero, send us that information. Or you can do nothing, which we will count as no support. If you are against it, you can also let us know. We've had one municipality that's done that so far. There's no guarantee that if we get 75% of the population represented, that they want this turned on, that our, that our board will. If we have 75% that want it turned on, or representatives who, elected officials represent 75% of the population that want it turned on, that's mean there's another set of elected officials who represent 25% of the population in the district who haven't said they want it turned on. But that's, that's kind of the bar we've set for our board to even start having the consideration and start to getting public comment on this type of issue. So hopefully, and thanks to staff, I think I've hopefully done this a way that I've explained it enough for you to understand what, what you're looking at here. Again, MSD's not asking for this. We put the program in place to be sustainable through Proposition S, to go forward and start trying to solve our stormwater problems. But there is an option for Clayton to decide if they would like to let us know if they have an opinion on this, or, or if you have no opinion. You don't have to submit any information to us. The due date is, we would have asked that any kind of correspondence come by the end of September. That'll give us time then to prepare our own budget and also to plan for leaving part of this tax in place for tax year 2025. So we asked that we do that. The other thing is, this is not a one-time shot. This has the potential of coming up every year, and we suspect it might. We've heard from folks who said, well, if we, it goes once, we may decide it's a bad idea and shut it off. Will you do that? And the answer is yes. Our board's going to listen to any public comment. There are a couple of folks who want to charge more than one quarter of that tax, and they're, said they will be notifying us of that. They want to go up to, instead of 1.6 cents, 3.2 cents. That's what they want to recommend to our board. So we'll see what all that looks like. It is something that could come up every year, however it works. So hopefully, I've given a good enough explanation of what the options are that the city council can consider from this proposal. Again, we haven't heard from a whole lot of folks yet. It was generated from the municipalities who are in the Deer Creek watershed. They're the ones who really asked us to set up a process to gather public comment for our board.
What are those municipalities? I think it's a subset of these.
Yeah, it is a subset of those.
But which ones?
It's a subset of those. We told them we would make sure we made it public at the time we presented to our trustees, so.
Want to know. We don't want to know.
We committed, we committed that we wouldn't necessarily indicate which ones have done it. So I will tell you, it's been, we've received information from two.
Okay. In support.
Two have been in support in the Deer Creek watershed.
Excuse me for a second. Clarity, so all of these are part of the Deer Creek watershed?
All of those municipalities, or at least part of the municipality is in the Deer Creek watershed. Correct.
And then the, so the OMCI funds, so the extra $200,000 that could potentially come back to Clayton. Just so I understand, OMCI funds, my understanding is you guys, I mean, our Public Works Director might take a project to you, but you ultimately approve the funds, right? It's not like our, it's not like our Public Works Director is saying we have a stormwater problem, so therefore come in and fix it. MSD, you guys approve all of those and approve the expenditure of all those funds.
The way the program is set up is, and I would tell you, it's very flexible. The whole idea of having the municipal grant program is give the cities the ability to do things they think is a higher priority than MSD sitting back and having more of a regional priority system. So it does require our board approval, but the standards are pretty low. It has to be a stormwater-related issue, and you need to send it to staff. Staff will look at it, agree that, yeah, that's a stormwater issue. And our board then needs to approve the agreement. And that would then simply put in place that we will reimburse you when, once the project is done.
And then depending on the cost of that project, if it's in excess of, I don't know, you know, $325,000 or whatever the case may be in a fiscal year, can the funds roll over for?
And since you, 325 is a good number. If you've got a $1 million stormwater project, you can tell us, we want you to save the money for us. We'll be back in three years, once there's sufficient funding to do that project. You have the ability to do that.
So if we, you know, because you're saying if we don't use the $200,000, our staff can say, you know, put it into the regional fund, right? But, but can't we also bank it? So how do you decide, how do you decide when to bank it?
I think it's the other way around. Think of it as, if we don't hear from you, and we'll ask a couple times, and there are some who say, we just don't want to be part of this. That's when we put it in the regional fund. If you tell us, we have a project, there's no decision on our spot. We will just simply hold the money for you until that project comes.
Potentially on an annual basis. We would need to touch base and say, we're interested in a project, and you keep holding on to the money.
So staff will probably ask on an annual basis, but understand, if we talk to somebody and say, we're holding the money for four years, I'm sure staff on an annual basis will come out and say, is that still the case? Yeah, it is, fine, and we're off and running, so.
And I'm kind of curious, you know, it seems like a lot of the sewer problems are very regional, you know? I mean, you've obviously undertaken a lot of big projects around us. You know, you recently dug a giant hole in our dog park and built a huge, you know, subterranean tunnel that goes to River to Pear.
I think it's our ball, our dog park, but okay. I was here when we did that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the semantics, right? So, but, so I know that you're doing a lot of big region. I'm just curious how important it is for us to hold on to our money for our residents. Like, I'm just curious how many smaller projects you see that are even feasible for municipalities to do?
And if I could, historically, I think this would be helpful to kind of give you the historical background. So I had some conversations with, with Matt about this as well, and decisions that have been made in the past. So most of our flooding issues that are apparent when we have major rain aren't localized issues. For instance, the area around Morelands or Claverack on Clayton Road, those are because of downstream conditions. So the city's viewpoint was always, take care of the downstream issues, and that will help us, because we do have very few localized issues. Topton is, is one that has popped up.
Right.
And that we've identified as a project. There's a previous OMCI that was Central, Central Clayton or Central County OMCI or something. There's, there's a balance there, and that's what's going to be applied towards that project on Topton. But aside from that, the city hasn't actually identified any small projects within Clayton that could be remedied with the OMCI. The mindset in the past was always put it towards the larger regional issues, because that's actually what is causing any kind of issues that actually manifest here within Clayton. We're actually very fortunate in that a lot of the communities on this list, when there's big rain, you know, our fire EMS are going out and performing swift water rescues in Rock Hill and Brentwood and these other communities. And so that's where the focus has been, is trying to relieve those particular issues around us, because we really don't have, we're really fortunate within our city limits, substantial stormwater problems like that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess for the benefit of the board, there's a pretty serious drainage issue on Topton Way. So we were actually really lucky and happy to hear that OMCI funds will be used for the project. They can't start construction for like two or three years, but at least it's going to be an approved project. So I think it was helpful for me to kind of understand how those funds worked. And David, thank you. I know that we've, but that is helpful also to hear that historical information. But just understanding that if we were to ask our residents to pay more money to actually see if it's beneficial for our community. So, and in this instance, like on Topton, like the residents are very relieved that they will get some relief. It's going to take a while, but, you know. And I have no idea how much that project is going to cost or where the money is coming from. I mean, I know OMCI funds, but I don't know if we've been banking our OMCI funds for a while. I think we've been letting them go.
Matt, may be able to give us more information on that. Go ahead.
So there's the, I may get the name on this wrong, so sorry. But since 1968, I believe, OMC, or the Clayton Central OMCI had been collecting tax, and it was shut off in 2008, but still continued to carry a balance. It is basically the core of downtown, a little bit up Merrimack, a little bit down Maryland. This project just happened to be right on that border and was able to utilize those funds.
So those funds have just been sitting there.
So how much?
Collecting interest.
But how much money is there, in there?
I think last check, it was a little near $2 million since that timeframe. So this will, you know, that'll use a significant portion of that, I anticipate. I think some other projects that MSD may have identified, it's been a few months now, but it was lining of some sewers in that, that region. So those funds can't be used citywide. It's dedicated to that, that area. But that's my understanding of where that, how it was structured and where it came from.
Thank you, Matt.
And I think the fact that those funds have been sitting there since 2008 just kind of illustrates that as far as widespread flooding issues, we don't have many that would warrant large projects.
Well, the problem is the projects are so expensive that our, our OMCI money wouldn't really cover it usually. I didn't realize it was, could accumulate, so I didn't know there was that much there.
Oh, so we're clear. That, that's, that has been accumulating, if not used, since the 1960s. And what happened is, we get to a point, like you said, it collects just a little bit of money, because it's not a very large area, and it takes a long time to build, which is one of the reasons we don't want to use the OMCIs. Matter of fact, we stopped collecting, like you said, in 2008. There used to be 23 of them. We only collect money from seven of them right now. We've spent most of them down, except for the areas where it's very hard to spend out the monies. Since you brought up, I think one thing to consider, and you guys are in better position, the Prop S money can be spent in your city or in cooperation with other cities for any project. So Prop S is more flexible. The OMCIs are very, especially in the case of Clayton, not only can you just use them in Clayton, but only in a certain part of Clayton with the OMCI. The Prop S, those dollars, and some municipalities are already doing this, planning projects. Sometimes a solution doesn't recognize municipal boundaries. And the solution, you know, is to take care of the problem. So there is that flexibility in the Proposition S grant. Some municipalities are positioned to do something like summer not, so.
Any other, we'll just kind of go around, any questions right now?
No, I remember the conversation before when we, when we deferred to giving it regionally, because it was a responsibility, we had a lot of money, and we didn't have the need, and it was a regional need. We need to fix things coming into and out of Clayton. And it's, and I was surprised to hear we had money sitting in one fund for this. So if, if something needs to be done under the, under Proposition S, then we can, what you're saying is that we still have some municipal control over that smaller amount, but we could be working with Richmond Heights or Maplewood or something else to, to pool that and come and address it. And then the same type of approval, I assume, from you all?
It would just be a demonstration to us that it is a stormwater project that the municipality say, we want to build this. This is what we want to do. Our board invariably will approve that. It's that simple.
And it just comes down to when?
Yeah, and I won't pretend to understand how the authority is there to, you know, whether or not we want to add an additional or continue a tax, but that's okay. I'm sure smarter people will.
So, well, no, since you asked, I, there aren't a whole lot of taxes that are sitting around that are grandfathered in prior to the Hancock Amendment. These happen to be, these are one of them. Yes, we have, we're trying to get rid of all of our old stuff. This is the oldest stuff that's still sitting around, so. Yeah, that's one word for it, but.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was going to ask, because I was, I am maybe still missing kind of the crux of the matter, which is, are we, is the, the proposal to, like, continue or extend some portion of the OMCI, would that result in a tax increase for our residents?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
And so the Board of Trustees of MSD has the authority to issue that tax?
To annually set a tax rate that's no higher than what's been approved by the state of Missouri for that OMCI that was grandfathered in from the 1960s. Right now, that, that maximum cap, after it goes to the Hancock analysis, sits at 6.4 cents. MSD's board has the ability on an annual basis to set it anywhere as long as it's within that 6.4 cents. And that's why we're talking here about what we're offering is charging one quarter of that, or about 1.6 cents.
And so can you remind me what we communicated to residents and voters about Prop S? Like, so, because what I'm hearing, what I think you're saying is, right, we had this idea to move away from the OMCI as the funding mechanism and to move to Prop S.
Right.
And it's both like a different actual funding mechanism or taxing authority, as well as a different way of distributing the funds within the district. So, so to be clear, the approval, Prop S was approved, which means MSD gets to assess the Prop S tax
Right.
as a property tax. And our voters would have had the idea that the OMCI was going away with that. And what you're being asked by some municipalities is to go back and say, oh, actually, we're still going to assess some portion of the OMCI, because even though we told you we probably weren't going to, we can. And so even though it's not subject to Hancock, that's not going to feel great, right? Am I, am I missing something?
No, you're, you're explaining exactly what decision you have.
That's what we have to hide, yeah.
Discussion with the public was, we are going to set the OMCIs at zero. There's actually a formal process to make the OMCIs go away at a later date. That's why I think one of the municipalities at one of our meetings said, it sounds like you're dumping this off on us. And our answer was, yes, we are, because our commitment was not to charge it.
Yeah, you don't want to use it. You've decided to operate differently.
But we do have customers who have asked us to put something in place, again, that staff would take to our board for consideration. This doesn't mean they will say yes.
Right, right.
The only thing we're asking is trying to get an opinion from the municipalities in the various watersheds, in the various OMCIs.
Okay. And David, my other question is, I think for you. So we talked about this Clayton Central OMCI that ended some number of years ago and had some money sitting in it. Have we been like holding our funds in the other OMCIs or forfeiting them to regional projects? Or can you talk about that a little bit more?
I understand that money's been forfeited to the regional projects.
Okay, so we've been in the practice of forfeiting the money from the Deer Creek and New City OMCIs for regional projects, and.
The $2 million that was mentioned earlier, that's the separate OMCI that, that we just, in 2008, and the balance is still just sitting there. For the two that we're talking about this evening, we've been deferring those for a number of years.
So we don't have balances sitting in those, and we have not been in the practice of using those funds or earmarking them for anything.
Projects identified within those eligible areas. So we deferred that to the region.
And with the exception of a couple of things, like obviously, I don't want to underestimate the impact of our residents who have that flooding. Like, that hasn't felt like a burden to our residents or our staff's ability to like plan projects, right? Okay, thank you.
Questions, comments?
Well, my, my general reaction is obviously this change in the formula from looking at property tax to population. Clearly, we're one of the six who are sort of disadvantaged by that. For me, the bottom line is, there's, as, as was talked about in, for example, in Topton, you know, there, there is a need for being able to address different kinds of projects. It sounds to me like the impact on our residents would be exceedingly small. And so I think, given the flexibility of this, I would, you know, I would be supportive of seeking, to be supportive of this as one of the cities. The to be supportive of this as one of the cities who would request this kind of flexibility
That would would request the tax
Yes
Yeah
Yes So um Yeah I I'm um Still somewhat confused by all of this but I think that um My understanding is since we've rarely used this that most of the problems are in other parts of our broader community And that we need funds to fix those to address our own problems and Prop S Went to our voters and all voters to approve These major issues in our um service area That that is what we're supposed to do and that since consequently these O M C I's are designed for higher priority community projects which we don't have Um I struggle to understand why we would do this Unless there is something um about the greater whole that we aren't doing our fair share to tax our taxpayers To help the region um which seems kind of a backwards way of looking at things and so I don't subscribe to that but um I'm trying to figure out either what I'm missing um or why we would do this and so I I I don't know that there's any comment you need to make that I'm just processing it so
If anything
Yeah just a couple so I mean Becky asked a lot of the questions I did but Help me out so in this when it says Clayton are we talking a portion of Clayton or is that the whole city
It is not the whole city there's a portion of Clayton that's in something called the University City Branch of River to Pear
Would you mention so so like what's if I'm trying to think of like a percentage of Clayton we're talking about are we talking ten percent of the city fifty percent of the city
I think if we look at it by I think the O M C I grants amounts that you would be getting in each So in Deer Creek it's four hundred and one thousand
Mm-hmm
Per year right now prior to it stopping in the University City Branch of River to Pear it's seventeen thousand It's a very small portion of Clayton that's actually in a Dunder O M C I Seventeen thousand I don't have the exact map with me or know exactly where the location's at but
I I know that Matt has a copy of it I mean ballparking I took a quick look at it I maybe what forty percent is in the The Deer Creek and a very small under five percent or so in the the U City
I would say largely we're we're probably seventy-five to eighty percent Deer Creek
Okay
Remainder geographically is University City and its focus really it skirts the northern edge of the city in a little bit
Okay thank you Matt
So I guess that's what I'm saying to this so what would be service and available for the Four hundred and one thousand now and the twenty thousand two hundred thousand later is forty percent of Clayton I'm just trying to understand how much landmass of the city of Clayton would actually be eligible for this money
So I'll let Brian correct me if I'm wrong on this the hundred and twenty-five thousand you see up there is under Prop S and would be the entire city
Okay
The additional were The develop MSD has developed as a response to these communities looking for another option Would be that quarter cent or quarter percent of the tax that they can charge to generate the extra two hundred thousand that would still Have to be spent within the Deer Creek watershed
Within the Deer Creek watershed which is do you have a line with where it's at
I believe that's up there
So the part of the city that's not you know
So this red line is that the
So the part of the city is is right here
Yeah I mean we're not voting today
Yeah yeah
On this topic so
This is trying to scale it um
So I would you I I think the one thing I can give you that ratio is is um indicative of property values
Okay
So the property value is a ratio in Deer Creek is four hundred and one thousand compared to seventeen thousand of is the Is the ratio of property value in University City Branch
Okay
Based on the taxing so it's it sounds like I would suspect based on aside it may not be Completely developed I'm not really sure what the area is like
Okay I mean Ee ee for me it comes down to at at some point It was proposed to voters that it was gonna be replaced and I don't know if we should be in the position to go against voters voted for it This is what they expected I don't I'd be hard pressed to then go back and say Yeah yeah we know you voted for this thinking this but we're gonna go ahead and layer the tax anyway because We think we know better than what voters have voted for but um Anyway that's my initial kind of two cents on it but we obviously have a larger discussion and vote on it
Wait so we need to kind of wrap it up since five after seven so we have to start a regular meeting so um I think what what we have we don't make a decision tonight I think it would be great if uh David and Matt could Help us educate us just a little bit more before we do make a decision I'd love to see a map of all these different districts And to know if If some of our uh other our nearby cities that are adjacent to us kind of where they're what they're thinking and are there The main thing is are there joint projects that would be really important let's just say between Richmond Heights and Clayton you mentioned that Across Clayton you know where that where the um line upstream problems there so are there projects like that that we If we had this money we could solve combining with Richmond Heights or whoever or not and any other um Sort of nuances of this thing that we're not picking up on tonight And we could have another discussion and then decide what we want to do and we have until the end of September you said
For this year it can always come up again next year
Oh yeah okay true so it's not
It's not a it's not an all or nothing for this year it's something that potentially could come up every year
Right okay did you have
Just one clarification so my understanding was that based upon the old system it has to be sent within that geographic boundary Of the watershed based on the new system we can combine funds with
There there are some cities if you're familiar with twenty-four one up in the Normandy School District Who pool their funds for infrastructure repairs anyway they will be pooling their monies of all the cities And those cities may not get a benefit they may decide in this area we're gonna do this with that funding
The distinction though is is that under the the profit
That's under Prop all I'm talking about is Prop S not talking about O M C I
Stay within your geography so when you're talking about working with a neighbor The work that we pay for has to be within our geographic bounds if we're doing it under the
And there's with too but if those geographic bounds meet up
Right
There would be might be an opportunity I know that you know sort of a stretch okay so we um thank you very much
Um staff please call us if you got a question we're willing to come back if you think it's worthwhile MSD presenting any additional information so
Okay thank you
Thank you that's very helpful
Okay um alright so we're now ready to start our seven o'clock meeting and uh will the city clerk please call the roll
Alderwoman McAndrew
Here
Alderwoman Buse
Here
Alderwoman Patel
Here
Alderman Fader
Here
Alderman Hummel
Here
Alderman York
Here
Mayor Harris
Here
City Manager Gibson City Attorney Jones
Here
Thank you
Oh welcome Attorney Jones I don't know if we've met um but welcome to our to our board meeting
Thank you it's my pleasure
Um okay so before we get started um before public requests and petitions I just want to take a minute and just recognize That we um some weeks ago now lost a very um a very Important and beloved member of our Clayton community Mel Disney And he was he's kind of an institution and some of you obviously are too new to have seen him come to our board meetings For years and comment on various things uh he was always engaged he was always uh in Always civil and good spirits about everything um but he he really cared about our city and And gave a lot of input over the years and I didn't know if if any of you know him and would like to make a comment on that um I'll start over here just in case and and we'll go around
Yeah and Mr. Disney is a neighbor of mine he lives on Westmoreland or he lived on Westmoreland him and his wife did um I really didn't know him very well him and his wife moved I don't know maybe a few years after I moved down to the street but I just remember yes he was always Always wanted to be involved the last committee he was um a part of I remember when his term kind of ended Um you know I sent him an email saying you know Mel thank you so much for your service and he wrote back just the kindest email like thank you so much it is such a Privilege to be a part of this community and a privilege to serve on the city's committees so it was just such a gracious and Very kind email so yeah he was he was he loved Clayton he loved living he um You know had a stroke about five or six years ago well before covid and um I don't think there was any thought by his family that him and his wife were ever gonna move back to their home but he would not let them sell it because he always I think really hoped To move back so um yeah he was a great member of the community and will certainly be missed on was has been missed on Westmoreland but It will be missed so
I think Gary you had something
I knew I knew Mr. Disney for over the years at various meetings and I guess the one thing I would say that really reflects my respect for him Is that I as many times as I saw him I would never call him Mel I would always say Mr. Disney because Not only he was older than me but there was just something about him he was authoritative he was knowledgeable he was cantankerous but Um he was obviously dedicated to the city he always deserved to be known as Mr. Disney I I was acquainted with Mr. Disney um um I I was familiar with him and I admired the fact that he was highly engaged in city politics and cared and so He was a good man
Okay well thanks everyone um he will be missed alright um now's the time on our agenda for public requests and petitions Um I don't know if we have we have some people online and um we have someone in our audience
I'll introduce him really quickly that's Ronald Jones Ronald's a student at University of Missouri St. Louis in the Public Administration Program Uh he's also a building inspector with Delwood is that correct Yes so he's here this evening observing our Board of Aldermen meeting for an assignment Welcome Ronald
Yeah welcome uh okay so next then I'm sorry I still see any other public comment coming so We can uh move right into our consent agenda Uh if if does anybody have any comments about it would you like to discuss anything on the consent agenda Okay so then we can go ahead and have a motion
Um I will move to approve the consent agenda
Second any discussion
Alderwoman McAndrew
Aye
Alderwoman Buse
Aye
Alderwoman Patel
Aye
Alderman Fader
Aye
Alderman Hummel
Aye
Alderman York
Aye
Mayor Harris
Aye thank you
Okay time for the city manager report
Alright first item tonight are some community improvement district appointments this is for the Danielle Community Improvement District which is located at two sixteen North Merrimack That's the Hampton Inn and Suites uh typical with CID's uh property owner representatives of property owners within the district Uh actually make the appointments or recommend the appointments in this case the developer is the sole property owner within the CID Uh the five appointments were contained within the packet and staff recommends approval
Good uh any questions or comments from our audience Okay and any uh discussion on the part of the board Take a motion
I will introduce bill number seven zero two seven approving the appointments to the Danielle Community Community Improvement District Board of Directors to be read for the first time by title only
Second okay any discussion alright mister city attorney
Bill number seven zero two seven an ordinance of the city of Clayton Missouri approving the reappointment of members to the Board of Directors for the Danielle Community Improvement District first reading
All those in favor
Aye
Aye
Opposed
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number seven zero two seven on the day of its introduction
Second Okay we got a second all those in favor
Aye
Aye
Opposed okay great let the ministry reflect the board is giving unanimous consent
I'll introduce bill number seven zero two seven approving the appointments to the Danielle Community Community Improvement District Board of Directors to be read for the second time by title only
Second any discussion alright mister city attorney
Bill number seven zero two seven an ordinance of the city of Clayton Missouri approving the reappointment of members to the Board of Directors for the Danielle Community Improvement District second reading
Alderwoman McAndrew
Aye
Alderwoman Buse
Aye
Alderwoman Patel
Aye
Alderman Fader
Aye
Alderman Hummel
Aye
Alderman York
Aye
Mayor Harris
Aye thank you
Street lighting improvement
Yes in September of last year the city of Clayton entered into an on-call service agreement with CDG engineers for streetscape Lighting and landscape architecture services before that in twenty eighteen the city contracted with CDG To study residential street lighting and produce the twenty eighteen lighting standards report for the city From that report the areas of Wydown Forest High Point and Demond were identified as areas for improvement Due to maintenance concerns related to the existing direct burial electric lines in these areas The city of Clayton took over the existing systems in nineteen eighty-seven and the buried lines in these areas have been more prone to failure The attached proposal from CDG provides for professional engineering lighting design for the design phase pre-bid And certain services during the construction phase of the projects The proposed total fee for these consultant services is one hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars The design portion of the project was amended from the fiscal year twenty-three budget to the fiscal year twenty-four budget In the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred and three dollars therefore sufficient funding is available for this task order These projects are included in the approved C I P for fiscal year twenty-four Under this task order design services provided by CDG are scheduled to be completed by December thirty-first twenty twenty-four And construction is expected to take place the following calendar year Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance authorizing the task order with CDG engineers For one hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars plus a contingency of fifteen thousand dollars for lighting design in the Wydown Forest High Point and Demond areas uh and just to be really clear about the work they're performing here this is the the detailed construction drawings that we would need For the project so everything that was done in the past was really at a conceptual or preliminary level This will give us the detailed designs to actually carry out the uh of the project itself
Okay great um I'll open the discussion I'll just go around any any questions comments
Um David so just so I this would be these so we're using funds that would be left over from Like street the bonds that were you know like left over from before and then This so in terms of obviously there's mass lighting repairs that have to be done throughout the city that we would have to finance in another way Um so but this particular I guess area of the city would be done then right is that
These are
So this would be like I mean this year and next year that area of Clayton would be up to date on all their lighting
That's correct These these are the three highest priority areas so we broke these out from the larger project and then applied the twenty fourteen bond construction funds to it The twenty fourteen bond construction funds we really need to deplete that that balance and this is a certainly a worthy project
And then um when they do construction do they put will all new lights go into is that part of
So that's Sorry I was hitting up because I figured it might come to me
Yeah
Uh yes the the biggest thing that we experienced that Is the lines that are underground and those direct burial that caused defaults that we can't repair easily So but a good portion of the improvement is below grade but also in the areas where we have Um spacing that needs to be brought tighter to get better coverage and uniformity of light You're looking at new lights and fixtures for that new poles
So we're not necessarily taking out all the existing lights
I I don't know enough to say that at this point I would say in general you're probably looking at mostly a full-scale replacement but we'll look to do Savings where we we can
Okay I was just I mean I was just kind of curious and I know that obviously the construction won't happen for a little bit so
Yeah the the goal at the end of the project is to have things up to illumination standards uh lines and conduit And it's easy to repair and fewer lights that are down for an extended period of time
Um thank you
You could just stay
I just I I I just want to build on that a little bit same topic is you know I I think if you're replacing Poles and fixtures or lanterns whatever you call them um I'm just gonna make sure that before those Fixtures are chosen that the board will have an opportunity to see what the plan is to put in Because we have as you know all these historic neighborhoods and we need to make sure I know there's a need to standardize we discussed it and that's that's great but we just need to make sure that we have an opportunity to kind of weigh in on What what you what you're gonna what you want to do in that regard and then the other way in in that I'm hoping for is You know we've done a lot of work with our overlay our Wash U overlay working with dark sky And so I just am hoping that this group will also take a look at You know what does that mean for for a project like this and are there things we could do better with regard to You know our natural environment birds and all that stuff
Um so two points on that on the uh the first we did ask the consultant to build in some extra time can To consider since this is the first lighting project we're approaching in the city and as we look at the ways to standardize so that we can Store that those elements down at the municipal garage a little easier and have interoperability Uh we thought there might be more discussions we asked them to include a little bit more time for that as well as just kind of a a meeting cost in case we need to add more Part two uh any of the fixtures we buy right now are cutoff style fixtures that Would meet dark sky certifications but that's certainly something we'll we'll look at we've got Lights in town that may not meet that
We've got lights in town that may not meet that based on when they were purchased last, but that's what we look for whenever we're replacing those fixtures now.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, sorry.
Can I, can I just ask a, oh, you made me think of, so, as we do this, just because I'm curious, you know, as it comes up, you know, like, communication with our residents, which I know this is in Ward One, but I'm just curious to, will it be very standard, like, the distance between light poles? I'm just curious if somebody all of a sudden finds a light pole in front of their house and they're like, where it used to be dark, and now it's all lit up, and now I can't sleep at night, and I have to buy new curtains. I'm just curious how standard it will be, and I guess maybe the consultants will give us some idea of that.
The light will be standard spacing more likely, but it may not be standard as to what's there today, so.
Right, that's what I'm, it might change, so I'm just curious.
I guarantee you, we're going to have people complaining about that.
Right, yeah, so, but I'm just wondering if, like, if they come in and communicate to us if there's, if there's any sort of, if there can be an adjustment as to where the light goes. But maybe there can't be if it has to be a certain distance.
So the thing we have a problem right now with in some areas are intensity and uniformity. We can get enough average light, but the uniformity, it may be real bright here, real dark there. And part of that is due to the, the trees in the area. So picking the right height pole so that the trees don't become an issue for blocking that light while not utilizing more light than we need to will be a balance. I can't say that we'll go back with the exact same height poles, because it may not be the best fit for that area, but there is the potential that those lights could move locations as we do the design, and.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like there's a lot that goes, I don't know, there's a lot that goes into it.
And so the, the, you, there's different lighting distributions too in the light you pick about how it spreads the light. There's, not all of them are just circular. You can have them be more linear and ways that maybe you depend on the light that's chosen, if there's a way it can be shielded.
And I would think neighborhood by neighborhood potentially could be different, right, depending on?
On, be different based on the needs of what they would have for the.
Needs or, like, spacing of driveways, or, I don't know, you know, it just might.
Yeah, if the trees are more mature in certain neighborhoods or a higher canopy, yes, that could come into play, for sure.
But you gotta be careful. Yeah, I, I don't have much to ask. I did, you know, I do catch my breath every time we come up with a lighting project. The fact that we, as I recall, it was a pretty substantial sum that we paid for the original Lighting Standards Report for the city, and then, and this is a design. I understand the difference. And as we go through the different areas, this will keep coming, I, I can't remember what the schedule is in the budget for the different areas in doing lighting projects.
Currently, fund, as far as what's funded and been discussed, it's only these projects.
Right.
There's a, many more projects looking into the future that we would be looking to, in some way, fund. We haven't identified exactly what that would be like yet. But the, the study that was done in 2018 was a very high level. I think it was about a $35,000 study, just for reference.
Okay, all right. And so, but is this, is this what we should, whatever board is sitting here should be expecting when another neighborhood, when, when the next step is taken, when there's another neighborhood? This is a pretty typical cost for getting that design, because we haven't even gotten to the actual work and, and getting it done yet.
Yeah, I, I think.
Something that you can build on when you start figuring out what the right space for, for the different poles are and everything else. Does it, does it reduce the costs going forward?
You know, if I'm understanding your question correctly, yes, this is for just the design of these three areas, but we expect the construction, and what, what's in the budget right now funded is just under $2 million for the construction. These are not on the lower end. These are some of those that, there's more maintenance needed on these areas, and therefore, a little more intensive on construction. Wydown Boulevard is one that would cost more than this when that project would be scheduled. But generally, a lot of these areas may be this or lower, so I, I don't expect them to continue to be much larger than this, where we're starting at the low end. If that, I'm not sure if that's really addressing.
I'm sure there really isn't answer to what I'm trying to figure out. It's just, it's just a lot of money. It's, it's important to get done. It's just really daunting.
A, a big number's in aggregate. When we looked in this 2018, I think we estimated we have about $15 million worth of work. This is two of it.
Okay, thanks.
I was going to ask about the light shielding and dark sky considerations. It sounds like you've already got that incorporated. And then also, you know, like, what the impact will be on residents and how we'll communicate that, so. I trust that we'll care for that. That's all I just want to bring up. And I would just add that as a person who has a streetlight right in front of my house, it's actually quite nice. It's not, like, glaring. It's a, like, warm, quiet light, and it increases the sense of safety, and I believe. That, personal opinions will vary. I know we will hear a wide range from people in our community, but it's not like a glaring, right? I mean, I can't, it to be the same type of.
Yeah, that uniformity, I expect on average, on the whole, we would increase that so that
Yeah.
you don't have those areas where, you're still going to have some areas that are a little bit brighter than others, just because the lights are spaced, but not as drastic as a contrast between the two areas.
Yeah, thanks.
I do one more question. Are you using, are there any solar components to any of this?
No, no, we, we've tried a few solar lights. We've got one installed on Big Bend right now. We're going to have to upgrade that one and try maybe a different one, but right now, technology's not there.
So, I, I'm sorry, but I have to build on Becky's comment as well. So, streetlights are kind of something that I'm getting the weeds on. David is mad, you know, really tired of me asking them questions over the years, but, and nevertheless. So, when you talk about a warm and glowing light, we get down to what are the lumens going to be, and so I would just be interested to see, once they do their study and, you know, everything, what they're going to recommend for neighborhood lighting, you know, it, which was very different from, you know, downtown street lighting, which is presumably brighter. So, the, you don't have to say what it is now, but I'm, we're hope, I'm hoping, like Becky, that it will still, our neighborhoods can still have that warm, kind of glowing light versus a really bright, stark, high lumen fixture.
Just for clarity, lumen is the, the brightness. Temperature is the color, when we start talking about that. So as, you might hear something with higher or lower lumen, that doesn't necessarily change the color, just, just in case we get into discussion.
We want the warm and the glowing. Let's put it that way, what we do anyway. Okay, sorry. Okay, keep going, guys.
I'm sure there's going to be a lot to talk about, but the task order makes sense to me, so I don't have any other questions.
Most of my questions have been answered as well. I guess the only one I wanted to ask about had to do more with funding. Bridgette had brought up the bond funds, and David, you mentioned the CIP, so I understand this expenditure is already built in, but the two, approximate $2 million for the actual work that would be done, is that, what's the source of those funds? Are they built into a budget already as well?
It is. It's, it's in the five-year CIP and is paid for out of the 2014 bond construction funds. So this, this will, for the most part, deplete that balance completely.
Okay, great. That's all. Thank you.
And the only, the only thing I had was, if I remember correctly, Matt, I think alluded to it, this will wrap up the biggest needs, but then the next set of big lighting projects is five years away? Six, did, did I remember that right on the CIP?
Well, we, we had them in the out years, so beyond the five years, we were kind of looking at that 10-year projection, and, and we started sprinkling those in, starting with Wydown Boulevard, and I think that was at maybe the six or seven-year mark. And that gets back to that discussion we were talking about, where we're probably nine years out or so from having to do the next GO bond for road construction and, and all of that, and the possibility of wrapping the street lighting project into that overall general obligation and just doing a, a bigger, bigger issuance at that point in time. That's a conversation we're going to have to have down the road, but within the five-year CIP itself, I think it's highly unlikely that one of these larger lighting projects ends up making it into that, that five-year program.
Okay.
But I just don't think the funds will be available.
Okay, thanks. Everything else is, people already asked. Go ahead. Thanks.
One, one last minor question. Like, for Wydown Forest as an example, I'm familiar, we're all familiar with how the, the trees and the tree lawn and the sidewalks, and it's just really, like, a, a tangle of stuff. How will replacement, and I realize this is the study, how would replacement affect all those street trees in a, in a situation like that?
So, part of this design is going to get location of all the utilities, which will drive a lot of the design. So we'll have to make those decisions once we see that information. Many times you'll see contractors are able to identify boring between the lights in order to preserve those type of trees. You can also do things like hydroexcavating that uses water to excavate to maybe not damage roots in certain areas. And then, but where those pits are, whether, you, you mentioned that they're very tight in there. That's some of our tightest streets and green spaces. So it may be, have to be in the roadway, which will increase construction costs in order, for the bore pits, for instance. So that's a, that's a to be determined once we kind of get survey information, but it's definitely a consideration, because we've got some trees in there that are, they're quite large and occupying a lot of space, and some of them have to be removed on occasion just because of that.
Right, 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 right.
Can I follow with one question?
Sure.
I assume we can't double up on conduits, so if the, the electric company rises a conduit in there, we, we can't run our lighting.
Not in the same con.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's not spare conduits out there where we could just run them in?
We can't, like, double up them in one, like, if, if there's a PVC pipe in the ground that we're running the electric cable through already, we couldn't run our lighting cable through that?
Yeah, nothing that runs from light to light that's there for us to utilize.
Is there, do we know of any utility projects that are going on in these neighborhoods that we could try to spare the neighborhood a little bit of our construction, and then, six months later, Amren comes in with their construction?
Wydown Forest had a, a permit come in submitted to us last year. We've asked them to hold on that for coordination. I think it was for Communications Company.
Okay.
As we worked through this to see if there was a way we could coordinate, but as of right now, that's, there, there's nothing coordinated like that, but we're trying to consider those things when permits come in.
Okay, great, thanks.
Great, thank you, Matt. Okay. Alderwoman McAndrew?
I would like to introduce Bill Number 7028 approving a task order with CDG Engineers, Inc. for the design of lighting improvements in the Wydown Forest, High Point, and Demond areas to be read for the first time by title only.
Second, any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Bill Number 7028, ordinance for a task order with CDG Engineers, Inc. for the design of lighting improvements in the Wydown Forest, High Point, and Demond areas. First reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I will move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill Number 7028 on the day of its introduction.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, let the minutes reflect. The board is giving unanimous consent.
I'd like to introduce Bill Number 7028 approving a task order with CDG Engineers, Inc. for the design, design of lighting improvements in the Wydown Forest, High Point, and Demond areas to be read for the second time by title only.
Second, any discussion? Hey, Mr. City Attorney?
Bill Number 7028, ordinance for a task order with CDG Engineers, Inc. for the design of lighting improvements in the Wydown Forest, High Point, and Demond areas. Second reading.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye, thank you.
Okay, vector control.
All right, so before anyone asks why we're doing an ordinance for something this small, it is a requirement that anytime we have an intergovernmental agreement that we do it, we do it by ordinance, so. This particular project, this is the city's contract with St. Louis County for vector control, which is mosquito and, and rodent control. That expired on March 5th of this year. We, we were notified by the county that our existing contract expired, and we were invited to renew the contract. The St. Louis County Department of Public Health Vector Control Program provides adult mosquito surveillance, lab testing of field-collected adult mosquitoes, larvicidal treatment of mosquito breeding sites, and then other treatment related to adult mosquitoes and rodent abatement in public areas. Fees for mosquito treatments and rodent abatement have increased slightly with this new contract. The average annual cost of vector control services over the last three years have been roughly $2,621. The general fund has $3,564 budgeted for vector control in this fiscal year, and the new rates have been included in the fiscal year '25 budget planning. Staff recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute a five-year contract with St. Louis County for vector control services.
Okay, thank you. Open the discussion. We'll just go around. Bridgette?
I, I mean, I guess I'm just kind of curious. I mean, this is a small amount, but what, I don't, I don't, what are we? Where do they spray? Do they spray downtown near government buildings?
It's really all, it's purely reactive, so they'll get complaints from residents that there's maybe a high concentration of, of mosquitoes somewhere within our city limits, and if we get that call, we refer them to the county. The county will come out. Typically, they'll do some kind of test or trap some to see if they have any kind of virus, but if they find a certain concentration, then they'll go ahead and spray that area. This just covers that, that particular service.
And then the rodent abatement is that, but it's a abatement, like, if we, you know, I remember at some point on Nextdoor, there was a giant possum on the side of Wydown, like, public work, our public works.
A live one?
Or does, no, no, is dead, but people were, the county doesn't go get that, right?
No, so we actually store those, those animals.
Oh, right, in the public, yeah.
That's correct.
Yes, that's right. I forgot about that. So, okay, I mean, I, I was, I was just kind of curious what this is.
If there is a rodent problem in a, in a public area, we can call the county, and under this particular contract, they'll come out and, and take care of that for us.
And have they done that? Have they actually done that before, or?
I think the majority of this has been mosquito-related, but I'll let.
Yeah, and with the mosquitoes, they are proactively checking for areas that they would need to treat. With the rodent abatement, it's really focused more on, it says Norway rats when they're addressing issues with that in public areas, so it's not a, not as much of, hey, there's an animal on the roadway that they come collect, but it's, it's very focused and specific on areas they've identified to be a public health hazard, mostly with, with areas where there might be rats.
So you do find there's, they're responsive and they are proactive with their.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it's, it's a good agreement we've had with them for a long time. I, it's very reasonable, and
Yeah, it definitely is.
Not a lot of options.
I was just curious. I haven't, I mean, I don't remember ever hearing about this, so I was just kind of curious.
Been five years. I copied and pasted the RFP.
I was probably pretty glazed over five years ago, so, thanks, Matt.
So, just one other little question. So the, if a person, like, let's say someone in one of the apartment buildings, they view there's an infestation, is it the county they would call then to try to take care of that, even though that's on? Is there, is there some inspector that would come out and say, you know, you, property owner in violation of XYZ because you have an infestation of rats and you're not taking care of it?
So if it's on private property, they're probably going to refer them to some kind of pest control for the private property. This would be in areas where it gets into the right of what, or, public versus private.
For the abatement, but for enforcing, you know, health standards, I guess, is the county?
Oh, I, I don't have that answer offhand on how they would approach that.
And we have some ability to enforce that under the property maintenance code locally.
Okay, I'm not aware of an issue. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I feel like that came up when we talked about if people didn't pay for their trash.
Yeah.
Remember, and it just sat there. We'd be able to take care of it under.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, Matt.
They were, so, they will respond and investigate it, but they may not service it on private.
Exactly, okay. All right, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay, very good.
I just, it, it, it's less about this. It's more just a, the bigger picture. I, I see it's a five-year contract, and this county basically can, can increase the rates annually, and there's no cap on the rate increases. I don't think it's a huge deal for this. It's just something that I would, I'd mention because it's something for bigger contracts. I would be more important to want to see.
Yeah, we can also terminate with 30 days' notice without any other reason, right? So if they decide to be unreasonable.
Yeah, if they brought up some sort of significant increase, we bring it back to the Board of Alderman.
Okay.
And it's, I would also say it's, it's, it's atypical to have a contract that, that has a provision like that in there. Typically, we, we identify whatever kind of escalation there may be year over year. In this particular case, the, the county's not willing to do that, so we'll just monitor year over year, and if it comes back as some sort of significant increase, we'll take action then.
Okay. I'll introduce Bill Number 7029 approving a contract with St. Louis County for vector control services to be read for the first time by title only.
Second, any discussion? City Attorney?
Bill Number? Bill Number 7029, an ordinance approving a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri for vector control services. First reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll move that is unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill Number 7029 on the day of its introduction.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect. The board is giving unanimous consent.
I'll introduce Bill Number 7029. I'll introduce bill number 7029 approving a contract with St. Louis County for vector control services to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 7029, an ordinance approving a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri for vector control services. Second reading.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel? Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, benchmarking.
All right, this is a resolution to initiate the collection of building benchmarking information for city-owned buildings and support the development of a policy for expansion of the program to privately own buildings the following year. Building energy benchmarking is the practice of measuring and comparing the energy performance of buildings to industry standards or to similar buildings. By collecting data on energy use, water consumption, and other relevant metrics, benchmarking helps identify opportunities for improving efficiency and reducing operational costs. A benchmarking program allows building owners to track progress and make informed decisions about energy management and sustainability efforts. Ultimately, this practice can lead to significant cost savings, enhanced building performance, and a reduced environmental footprint. The City of Clayton Sustainability Advisory Committee discussed this topic at their September 2023 meeting and voted to forward a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen for the establishment of a benchmarking program. With the approval of this resolution, the city will begin benchmarking its own buildings over the next year, and staff will also develop legislation to bring back before the board that will include the requirements and processes for privately owned buildings over 100,000 square feet in total area.
Good. All right, open the discussion. Anything over here?
No, I think it's great. We've learned that, you know, our buildings are worst polluters. So I think it's great that we're starting the initiative to study our own buildings and then it will be great to move it to privately owned buildings as well. The Sustainability Committee's done a great job of bringing this to us, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this moving forward. And one question I had is with the private, private buildings, the conversations that I recall is that the city would be doing it for the upcoming year and then within a year. So afterwards, we'd roll it out to the private sector. And here, there's no timeframe for the private sector reference that I'm seeing. And.
So the, the recommendation was, was one year. We're saying in this resolution that, that we'll develop that legislation and initiate that program, but we don't have a specific date yet. We want to put together that legislation and bring it back to the board. But, you know, it's unknown how many meetings it might take to get through that. We do want to make sure that we publicize this or work with those, those property owners to make sure that they have six months at least to prepare for this program. So we're gonna work on the draft legislation and start discussing with that board, discussing that with the board immediately. But we didn't want to lock ourselves into a particular date in case we started to slip on that schedule a little bit. But the intent is absolutely to do this within the next year if we can get it done.
Okay, because I, I mean, those were the conversations and.
Absolutely.
Exactly what you're saying and just that, by, by the city doing it, that's a good time for us to be rolling it out and giving that notice. So as long as we continue to feel the urgency on that, that's great.
Absolutely.
Good question. Becky, anything from you?
No, I'm just glad to see us doing this. I'm grateful that you invited the folks from the city, it was probably more than a year ago now, to educate us about this and the Sustainability Committee. So look forward to seeing what we learn.
Great. Go ahead, Mr. Fader.
Sounds good.
I'm just curious about the scope, if there's anything excluded. I'm imagining city hall, fire station, police station, municipal garage. And then I'm wondering about other ones like Oakdale Park Buildings. Are those included too?
Yes, properties that the city owns and has the, we're paying the utility bills on. We've been collecting this information and inputting it into our asset management software for, since 2018. So this will, there's a little cleanup to do on that yet, but those buildings will be included if we own them. Because the building owner is the, ultimately the responsible party for submitting this information as we look towards the private sector as well.
And did I miss any buildings? I can't think of any others.
Oakdale was the big ones coming to mind that we had not yet captured. The other ones, we had already have the information rolling on, if you will. But yes.
Thank you.
And we'll have to do the new public works garage.
We'll update the information for it so we can see the, the benefit.
Improvement. Yeah.
My assumption is there's no cost associated with developing the plan. I know in terms of like staff time, like we don't need to outsource to consultants or anything like that and do what we're looking at.
There will be no consultant costs with it. It will all be staff time.
Okay.
We intend to also mimic what the City of St. Louis has done with their program so that if you're a building owner in both cities, it's very similar process.
Okay.
Right. So, yeah, for those who weren't around a year and a half ago or something or two.
September, I think, is.
I, I had, through my mayor's, various mayor's climate organizations somehow, and also botanical gardens, Gene Ponzi, heard about what the City of St. Louis was doing. And so they, they have a great program where they are already requiring, they've moved along quite a ways. You know, they, they, they started out with their own benchmarking, then they moved to voluntary benchmarking by, for the big buildings. And then it, now it's become a required target. And so they had a lot of staff to manage the program, so. But yes, we're modeling that, so it shouldn't, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. But it will take a lot of staff time once we get to communicating with these property owners and kind of trying to monitor what, you know, what they're reporting, et cetera. And if we ever develop, which we will, I hope in years to come, targets for them and then try to enforce that, then that'll just be a little more work. But I wanted to compliment you, Matt, on getting this thing going so quickly. I mean, I think it's, it's a lot. I know we've benchmarked off and on in the past, but to really put this program together so it can carry forward like we want it to is, is a big job. And thank you.
Thank you. There's been actually a lot of effort that goes in behind the scenes, just in everyday work of paying our bills that we've been collecting this data. So we're gonna take advantage of that now.
Yeah, yeah. And I just thought, I'll just add to that too, Matt, which you've been able to show, and Becky and I have had the advantage of being on the Sustainability Committee to see it, the way you've actually captured the data, coordinated and was able to explain it. And then on an ongoing basis over time is, is just really impressive and I think will serve us well. As in this current effort and, and just going on, it's something that can be passed on and part of our record, so thanks. All right, thanks again. All right, this Alderwoman McAndrew.
I will move to approve resolution number 2024-10 initiating a city building and benchmarking program as recommended by the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All right, if there's no further business, correct? So we can go around. We can start with our Mayor Pro Tim.
Not much to report. We did have a plan commission meeting last week, but it was very short. The M1 Bank wanted to put, just make their signage a little bit darker so you can see it better. But I think everybody would probably agree that the building looks fantastic across the street. So I think, you know, it seems like it's almost done. So the members, people are the higher-ups at the bank. Is Ken Potite, is he the?
He's the higher-up.
Yeah, so he was there and obviously very grateful, but him and others were there and he, you know, so that was nice that he was there just to kind of approve this paint change, which was obviously very easy. So I was just gonna let everyone know too, the, I, I won't be at the Plan Commission next week because I'm on vacation. But in case anybody's wondering, there's kind of a controversial development that is coming up on Bemis Den that I think will be discussed. So I think if you're interested in it, you might want to take a look at the plans and so, see. But I would just let you know.
Can you be more specific?
There's a, there's a historic home that is a double lot, so a developer's bought it and wants to put up a four, four condominium.
Is this the thing that made the news years ago?
Yep, so. But I would just encourage you to look at the plans if you're interested, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
And the only business I have is the reception for the boards and commissions is very nice.
Oh, yeah.
I enjoyed that. And let's say, thank you, June, for putting it together. Yeah, it was well done. People seem to mix really, really well and a positive event.
Yes, right. It was a good suggestion.
Good thing to be inside.
We had that suggestion.
Okay, Becky?
Great. I have two things to that I just want to share and highlight. One, the musical nights at Oakdale Park was on Sunday. And it had been, I used to go to that really regularly. And one of the things that I was reminded of is that even when it is pretty hot and miserable in St. Louis, it is quite pleasant to be at Oakdale Park. And so it really was a nice time. Attendance wasn't super high, but there was a decent crowd. The band was great. The Sustainability Committee was there, engaging with people, and they had like rock painting for kids. It was, it was real sweet. So that was great. And then one other thing that I did was attend a meeting with municipal elected officials from across the state, primarily the St. Louis region and Kansas City, to talk about strategies to combat preemption. So who knows what will come of that, but people are working on it. So I'm looking forward to seeing where that goes.
Good, thank you. Thank you for doing the extra things. Alderman Fader?
The Community Equity Commission is working on a program or just a meeting with its counterpart in Kirkwood next month to sort of review what both organizations have done. The event last week for the various commissions and members, it was a very nice event. And finally, just sort of anecdotally, St. Louis Shakespeare Festival, which I think has been around for 15 years, started somewhere in that history to do a show every year, a sort of mini version.
Shakespeare in the Street.
In Shakespeare in the Street in different either cities or neighborhoods. And in 2014, it was done in Clayton, I think on North Central. And mostly featured kids from Clayton High School. It was like all these shows, it was a takeoff, sort of an hour version of a Shakespeare play, but modernized and made contemporary. And mostly dealt with sort of desegregation and the sort of relationship of kids who were, lived in the district as to those who came in. But in any event, I think I was the only male Clayton resident who was actually in the cast, which wasn't my point. But the young lady who played Rosalind, which is the main part in that show, was a young woman from Webster University from their theater program, Carolyn Amos. And the only reason I remember her name is because last week we went to see As You Like It, which was in the park, which was directed by Nancy Bell, who actually wrote the 2014 Clayton version. And as I was sitting in the program, Mayor, the mayor was in front of me along with Judy Goodman, but as I looked in the program to see who was in the show. And Carolyn Amos, 10 years later, is now a professional actress in New York, playing the part of Rosalind. So I thought that was truly a small world. So anyway, it was, it was a neat experience.
And maybe I just say you did a great job saying all the world's a stage. You did that well.
Yes, that was my big line.
I, I would just share in the congratulations on the event. It was a wonderful time and I thought it was well-attended. So I have nothing else to share.
Yeah.
I, I kind of want to see the picture of Gary acting in the play in 2014.
Oh, it was, he was so funny. I laughed my head off.
Thank you. But.
The same, too.
Other than that, no, I would echo what everybody else said, that the Friday event was great. I was glad it was attended. Obviously, it was my first, well, shouldn't say obviously, it was my first one, obviously, as a, as an older person. And I hadn't been able to make the previous ones as community members. So I don't know what the, the attendance was like compared to other years, but it seemed like it was a good showing and everybody seemed to interact well. And, you know, that's, it was good, so.
I think the attendance was more this year. I really do. And I, I don't know why, but I'm wondering if they kind of wanted to see the lobby of that building. So, so is that all Jeff that you, okay. So I don't have a lot. I do want to say I was invited and you all should reach out and get yourselves invited to tour Bemis Den Place at your leisure. It's coming together. I saw a model apartment and sort of the space where the restaurant, the bigger restaurant will be and, and things like that. And I, I was very impressed. I really was. So I encourage you to reach out and if you're, if you're curious to go and see. I did encourage more articulation along the street than what is there. There is some. But at the top, it's great on Central, but the street level is not as much as I was hoping. Of course, David reminded me, well, that was all approved that way. But still, that doesn't stop me from going over there and saying, well, I wish it was a little more. And so when they, 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 they said that they would try really hard when they actually lease out these units, that they will go, because they want to sort of cater to the individual desires of that business owner and try to provide even more differentiation. So we'll hope that that can happen. First Watch is open. I know some of you have already been. Eager Beavers. And so that's exciting. And I, I sent you an email, but we've got a really exciting news of Five Iron Golf coming to that stretch of Forsyth. So that, all except for the one little space right next to the lobby area, will be full. So again, entertainment for, oh, a long-term lease now. And I'm just thrilled that they were able to really make good on that promise, so.
My son has already asked for a, like, how can he get like a, you know?
A membership?
Yeah, a membership.
I don't know if they have memberships, but they are gonna have leagues.
Right.
So that's a thing. And then lastly, just you mentioned the Shakespeare Festival. For some reason, within a period of two weeks, I went to Opera Theater for the first time. I went to the Muni with See Les Mis. And I went to the Shakespeare Festival As You Like It. And I just was reminded of how rich of a cultural world that we live in here in St. Louis. I mean, this is one of our big strengths. And so it just kind of hit me since I went to all those things, all in a stretch. Well, how lucky we are to have all of that. We, we complain a lot, but we really do have some great institutions and entertainment options, so. Lucky. And Black Rep is at Edison Theater with their last production of the season, starting Thursday, I think. Okay. What is the? Do you know? King something. I have to look. King something, okay. I forgot. Lot of those. I think we're trying to decide whether we're switching our tickets because of the, something on TV. Well, thank you. All right, so anything else on your end? No? Anybody else? Anything else? Okay, then we can take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.